Okay. I'd like to hold the meeting to order. This is Stanhope Board of Education, our regular meeting for March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call please.
Mrs. Choquette?
Here.
Mrs. Harold?
Here.
Mr. Valley?
Here.
Mr. Valardo?
Here.
Mrs. Sharpstein?
Here.
Mr. Moscatello?
Here.
Mr. Hagaman?
Here.
Okay. Okay.
Sunshine Law Statement. This is to advise the general public and to instruct that it be recorded in the minutes that in compliance with chapter two thirty-one of the Public Laws of nineteen seventy-five entitled, The Open Public Meetings Act, Stanhope Board of Education, located at twenty-four Valley Road, Stanhope, New Jersey, has caused this notice to be posted at the office of the Stanhope Board of Education, mailed to the New Jersey Herald, the Municipal Clerk of the Borough of Stanhope, the Stanhope Post Office, and posted at the Valley Road School and on the Stanhope Public Schools website, setting forth the time, date, and location of the meeting. Stanhope's Mission Statement. The Stanhope School District will provide a diverse and challenging educational environment that encourages individual initiatives, fosters success through teamwork, promotes accountability, demonstrates a passion for educational excellence, and ensures student achievement related to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. The Stanhope School District is committed to the development of our students and staff so that individual aspirations can be achieved through their lifelong learning. This is an executive session announcement. An executive session will be held for the purpose of personnel. That will be at the end of the meeting. Formal action may be taken. We have a oath of office to take care of?
Yes, Mr. Yagnum, you are going to read aloud the oath of office that I handed you, and once you do that and sign in, you will be officially a board member.
Thank you again, everybody. I, Yakub Yagnum, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States in this state under the authority of the people. So help me God. I, Yakub Yagnum, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of Member Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS nineteen semicolon four dash one, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJ S eighteen A semicolon twelve dash one, and that I will faithfully and partially and justly perform all duties of that office according to the best of my ability. So help me God. Sworn and subscribed to before.
You're good.
Oh, I'm good. Okay.
Yeah, we're just gonna sign it. You can sign it right now.
Appreciate it.
And then you're gonna read on your own time before the end of the meeting, the code of ethics that come with it, sign it, and then we'll get to work on all the other stuff.
Thank you so much again, everybody.
Welcome to the board.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard. Okay, that being done, that takes us to our first item on the agenda, which is a presentation. This is an addendum item. And you are, there's two names on here. I'm not sure which one is you are.
I'm sure that your microphone's on.
John.
He's the realtor.
John Poznick?
It won't project if the people watch it.
Oh, okay. Now we have viewers.
Wetlands sale.
And just so you're aware, this is recorded and this is being live broadcast to the community so you know that as this is happening.
Yeah, so my name is John Ponchak. I am the president and broker of record JP Realty. My counterpart, Mr. Wachtel, could not be here tonight. He's the developer for the Stanhope Residential Project that the school board is aware. I'm sure everyone is aware of this by now.
Yes.
I don't have to summarize and go through all of the basics. We're trying to.
I would appreciate a summary.
Okay, all right, because I'm not sure if everyone was here last time I was here. That was going back to August of last year, so. All right, so basically, I'm here today on behalf of my client, Mr. Lee. He's the owner of the tract of land that's adjoining the Board of Education's vacant wetland parcel. And so I'm his broker. I also represent the developer in this transaction. So as you know, we're under contract with the developer to build residential housing on our forty-three acre lot. However, due to DEP and EPA restrictions, the developer has been forced to acquire additional acreage to satisfy the state's stringent guidelines, and that's what brings us to the board. The school board approximately owns forty acres, which lies between our parcel and your school. Again, going back to last summer, we met with the board, we explained their situation, and we proposed that the board either dedicate the vacant wetland parcel to the state or sell it to us, thereby creating a green zone that would satisfy the DEP buffer requirements. And then during that meeting, we felt that the board indicated that the viability of the proposal as such, you know, with the residential development would benefit and behoove, you know, the board as well as the school system in general, potentially filling shrink its student population as well as increasing funding, you know, for the school by bringing in additional residential housing. The housing project is approximately one hundred and eighty-five to two hundred units. That's what we're looking at at this point, and that's what we've been proposing to the town. It's been, this is ongoing now over three years in our so-called approval process, and we're not even halfway there yet.
Excuse me, can you define a unit? A unit is an apartment? Is a one-bedroom condo, a three-bedroom condo? What is a unit?
It's a mixed unit population. There are single-family homes. There are one- and two-bedroom rental units as well.
No condos or condominiums?
No.
So it's single-family homes and?
And apartments rentals.
And you don't have a number on that yet?
No, we don't have a true number at this point. I'm not the developer. I'm the broker.
Okay.
Okay, so I don't have all the details. I mean, that's still in the planning stages because we, the original proposal that developer put forth was, I believe, for two hundred and sixty-six units, which was scaled back to approximately two hundred as I'd been made aware of. Okay, so that's kind of where we're at at this point.
As a point of clarification, you referenced a meeting in the summer. Was that summer two thousand and twenty-two?
Yes, last year.
Was it your understanding that the full board was part of that meeting at the time or aware of the meeting at the time?
Well, it wasn't the school board. It was just, it was sort of an impromptu meeting.
It was a committee. It was me, Matia, Mr. Hagaman, and Debbie.
Right.
That was, that was at that meeting.
Just for clarification, if we could refer to that as the committee as opposed to the board?
Okay.
Thank you.
Not a problem. So at that point, after the meeting with the committee, the developer drafted a purchase offer for forty thousand dollars, and for whatever reason, that offer was rejected. I'm not aware of any reasoning attached to that, but, which brings us, you know, to this point.
Just to that point, you reference you're not aware of any reasons. I believe a letter was sent.
Yes.
Dated January twelfth indicating reasons?
Well, I also, I never saw the letter again. It wasn't sent to me, but I was told that it had not reasons, but requirements of the developer to produce documentations or facts or something along those lines to.
It asked, it asked for how the forty thousand dollar offer was determined, how did, whoever the owner is.
Right.
Came up with that number. And number two, we asked for the data on how the development of the new Bank Street complex in Netcon has impacted the community and their local district.
Okay, and if I could add to that, please, following those two bullet points, after discussion at the board, was a statement, if the board is interested in entertaining the sale of this property, after receiving this information, it will request that you or one of your constituents deliver a public presentation at the Valley Road School in Stanhope, New Jersey. This will allow the board and community members to hear firsthand the plans of the proposed development so that they can ascertain the potential impact to this community. I would just ask maybe a question for the board. Did we receive a counteroffer that we were then able to consider, which would have been the basis of this addendum being added to the agenda, in my understanding, last minute for this presentation to take place? That would just be a question. I thought we were in agreement that we were awaiting a, another formal proposal that the board would consider.
We have not received.
That would have resulted in the meeting, as I just restated the, from the letter that was sent.
John and I just spoke yesterday for the first time since that letter got sent out. He was aware of the letter. We have not, he was aware of the letter but had not seen the letter. We have not received a response to the letter, and based on the conversation that we had and the miscommunication going on between all parties involved, we thought it would be good for John to come in and clarify any misunderstandings that may had with everybody else.
And that would also put this into public forum right now, as known only as the board, but as with the community, because it is live stream. So that's why we, this is at the public forum level for us to get additional information.
So just to clarify, in lieu of following what we stated in this letter, if the board is interested in entertaining the sale of this property after receiving this information, it will request that you or your constituents deliver a public presentation. In lieu of that, discussion was had yesterday, and an addendum was put on the agenda for this presentation this evening?
But this isn't a presentation referring to this. This is actually answering some of the questions from the letter.
This is not a, this is not the public hearing that's referred to in here. We still have counteroffers. You still have, in a brief discussion the other day with somebody at the town council level, you guys are still trying to get, or the developer's still trying to get paperwork together, and it hasn't even gone before in the planning board yet? Am I correct?
Correct.
I mean, there's, there's.
And there's no sense going before the planning board until we can overcome this hurdle.
There's just a lot of work.
Because without this additional acreage, it's a moot point. There's no, there's no reason to go before the planning board. So.
Again, as what states in the letter, we're just interested to know how the number of forty thousand dollars came about.
Well, I spoke with the developer before the meeting, and unfortunately, he couldn't make it here tonight. I asked him about the forty thousand dollar offer, and he said it was just based on, based on the property in general. I mean, there's no, he's not in the appraisal business. I mean, if anybody want to ask for an appraisal or a CMA, you would ask someone like myself, or you would go, you know, to an outside party and, and ask for that type of, you know, advice. For him to bring that to you is sort of counterintuitive because he's just gonna say, well, that's what we feel it's worth. And, I mean, speaking as, as a broker, I mean, I've done a number of these types of deals, and the land that we're talking about is not very valuable. It's wetlands.
No, no, it's a, it's not all wetlands.
It's not all wetlands.
Well, there's seven to nine acres that are not, that's twenty percent.
Right.
Of twenty-five percent of it, right? So it's not all wetlands. You know what I mean? And, and we had just gone through the sale of some other school property in the center of town, and it had a two-room schoolhouse on it, and we, originally we're looking for, to price it out just for the land, thinking somebody was just gonna take a bulldozer to it, and we were looking at vacant property. Okay, and in our investigation in town, a vacant one-acre lot was in the hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar an acre price tag. But that's a, that's a improved lot. The water's at the curb, the sewer's at the curb, so I don't know, take thirty-five, forty thousand dollars off of that. So you're in, say, ninety thousand dollars an acre. Well, ninety times, times seven, you're talking a couple hundred thousand dollars, not forty thousand dollars, you know? So we're trying to put some kind of thought into how the number can come up. We couldn't understand how you came up with forty just out of just saying nowhere. You know, you know what I mean? So that, that was a little bit of a complicating fashion with us. We weren't sure why or how that number came up.
Well, again, there are cost concerns involved in this deal. You know, inflation rates, you've got interest rates. The deal is, is bordering catastrophe, to be quite honest with you at this point.
Okay.
Because of cost overrides, there's no, no real dollars left to acquire more land. The seller that I represent, Mr. Lee, they've actually dedicated and, and offered an additional fourteen acres that's adjoining this parcel in Byrum to add to the green zone. But again, that was not enough in the state's eyes, so we need to go outside of that to find additional, you know, buffer area, hoping that the school board and committee would find it equally as beneficial to allow this. And by, you know, we felt originally just to dedicate that property to get us through the approval period, but it's obvious that, you know, you want more than, than the forty thousand at this point.
Oh, we want a rationale. I'm not saying, I'm not saying forty-five wouldn't make it either, or I'm not, all I'm saying is we need somebody to sit down with us through, recognize real estate appraisal issues from your part to show how you determined that forty acres in Sussex County was worth forty thousand dollars, a thousand dollars an acre. That's, that's what we're asking somebody to come forth with real tangible evidence so we know that we're making the right decision for our community.
But it shouldn't be from the developer, is what I'm trying to get at, okay? If you want an outside appraisal, then you should get an outside appraisal. The developer doesn't want to spend five thousand dollars. He's up to forty thousand, but he was waiting for a counteroffer. He was waiting for something that, in, in my business, the counteroffer comes like almost immediately, and we go back and forth, and we make a deal.
Well, you see, that, that's where it got, when we had that committee meeting, we were told maybe they'll be back in a week or so with an offer. It was November when we, when the first letter came out. It was months since our first, since that first meeting. We thought, we thought they dropped the project.
That's the developer's fault, and they explained to Deborah that, you know, these things tend to get pushed back. If we're getting, you know, speaking off the record, so to speak, we get pushed back on a certain, you know, deal. This developer's got multiple deals in the works at any given time, and he's going to concentrate on a deal that looks like it's gonna win. And if we get objections, you know, we've got more objections than I can shake a stick at with DEP and EPA and trying to make this work, and he's into this deal for at least two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollars already, just in legal and soft costs. So to keep compounding that and adding obstacles, that's when the developer sometimes just wants to wash his hands and say, you know, I'll take the loss. So I'm here to try to circumvent that and see if we can put this deal back on the tracks, because quite frankly, the seller, my client, is getting, he's getting old. He's in his mid-eighties, and he said, I want this thing sold yesterday. He called me this week, and he said, if we can't make this deal happen for residential, he said, find me a buyer, and let's do the deal with the current zoning, which is industrial. So he wants me to bring an industrial buyer and build warehousing there, and then we don't need the school's land, and we just can take a different track on it, you know, go in a different direction.
Can I interject for a moment?
Sure.
And that's his right to do with his land. With, with that in mind, I think the best way we can explain it, somebody shows up at my house one day and says, I want to buy your home. It's a very fair question to ask, how much you willing to pay? It's a, it's not, it's not our responsibility to go get an appraisal because some random person said, I want to buy your land or buy your home. With that being said.
I mean, ninety percent of the time, if you're gonna sell your house, they'll get a steal made before you even put it on market.
That's if we were interested and we had it up on market, which I don't believe this land was up for sale. Is that correct? I think, I think the main thing is.
The guy who's knocking on your door.
No, I understand. I just think we're kind of, I really think we're just kind of getting ahead of ourselves. As Gil said, it's just a really fair question. Where did that number come from, as you stated?
Pull them out of the air.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's an honest answer.
And that's an answer, and that, that's the main thing we were looking for.
There's no rationale to the number. It was just a, a number that they felt they're comfortable with. There's no marketing involved in it. It's just, here's the number, give us a counteroffer, let's make a deal. Again, that's how this business operates.
Not wanting to speak for the board, but just to kind of summarize some of the conversations that we have had as a board, that I think the questions and concerns that at least some of the board members have extend beyond the, the purchase value or the purchase price of the land that's in question. You know, there had very recently been a, a town hall, town council meeting where there was a significant number of the, of community members objecting to any new development, whether, you know, it be residential, you know, townhomes, condos, apartments, anything.
Like almost three years ago.
Agreed, but I think, but.
And again, that was somebody who from, I'm not sure where he came from, someone leaked information saying that there were gonna be five hundred units built on this property, and it was a.
I'm not bringing this up to debate with you because it's not my place to debate, right? Ultimately, this is a board decision, and they operate based on my recommendation, but it's not my role to, to dictate what happens, what hap, what doesn't happen. What I'm attempting to do right now is to give you a, a perspective that the purchase price is not the only, and in my opinion, based on what I've heard, I don't think it's the most significant concern that, and question that the board has. I think that in addition to wanting to know that purchase price and the rationale behind that and how it's impacted other areas in, in the community, is so that the board, who's been elected by the taxpayer, can then communicate that information to the public to let them know this is what's happening, and the public presentation would again be for them to have the opportunity to voice their opinions to the board before ultimately making a decision. The, the major concern was they were being, once given the offer, they're being asked to make a decision without enough information to make that decision on behalf of the community. So again, it's not for me to question, you can debate and question with our board members. I just wanted to bring that to light and make sure that you understood the full context of the conversation.
I understand completely, and the fact of the matter is that the, asking for an impact study on a property, I think it was in Newton on Bank Street, that we have no knowledge of, will cost several thousands of dollars to put that study together, and it's an unfair burden on the developer to, to place that upon him. We're gonna have to do an impact study regardless for the Planning and Zoning Board. So that, that will be addressed and taken care of, but that, this is not the time to do that. We just want to see if there's a deal possible here, if the school board and committees are interested in moving forward.
So if I could interject, the, two things you noted, which are just of concern to me, I mean, the phrase was out of thin air when referring to the forty thousand, and then the phrase, get the deal back on the tracks. I, you know, I, I don't, I didn't have any understanding that there was a deal to be placed on the tracks or getting it, yes, that's, that's news to me. And I, I think at first, the board has serious discussion and consideration on the simple matter of whether we have any interest in selling the land. So I, you know, I, I appreciate, you know, the insight that you're providing.
My understanding back in August that there was interest.
In fairness, that comes as, as surprise to myself as a member of the board. I'll speak for myself.
So where does that leave us? I mean, I have to take something back to my client to say, you know, I got a positive read, I got a negative read, and then we'll just move, move from there.
Forgive me for a second, because you, you made a statement before that if you could clarify, that the land is of no value. Well, it's certainly of value to your client. Whether or not it's of value to the board, it has a value because it's ours, but I would think if your client, if it has value to your client, why put the forty thousand dollar offer out when almost anybody's gonna reject it because it's a thousand dollars an acre? I mean, it just, it's not even a good faith offer.
We looked at it as, as a marriage, that we were both gonna wind up benefiting from this. The school board, the school, the school system, you know, the enrollment was all gonna benefit, as well as the project gonna benefit.
You're, you're correct, sir. You are correct. That the enrollment, that the enrollment, but enrollments don't necessarily, in questioning the board, the board president from Netcon and I had a conversation about the impact of that Bank Street project. Are you familiar with it?
I am, sir.
It's a, it's where the, it's where an old moving factory was, a moving storage company was. I guess, estimate, there's two hundred and fifty apartments in there, several large three- and four-story buildings, very nicely done, very modern, and when the, we had a demographic study done three years ago, maybe four years ago, and that project was on the books, and it was estimated that that would generate about eleven kids. And I know she was very upset with that, and she felt that they were lowballing it, this, that, and the other thing. When I spoke to her about two weeks ago, that apartment complex has generated less than five students. Yes. So there, there is an impact to the school, but that comes, that's why my question to you was on the units. Single-family homes, condominiums. Single family homes, condominiums, uh, townhouses tend to bring families in, into it. When you have one bedroom apartments, it's tough. You know what I mean? And they're, they're the conversation to break down with one or two bedrooms. We're, we're talking about stuff that happens in moving along with you, trying to get your finances and developers and paperwork in order that comes with us. The marriage is us looking at what you're presenting us and saying, does it work for us or not? We're not buying it. We are, this, nine people, seven people sitting here are not buying it. The community is buying into this. That's who the marriage is with. And there are community people who love that piece of property. There are community people who don't want to lose it. They look at that as a nice place, park type. I know I walk my dog through those trails a couple of times a week. It's beautiful back there.
That would not change. We have no, there was no intention of touching the 40 acres.
That's discussion, but that's not finalized. There's no written stuff. We don't know what acres you're going to, there's, there's so much you're putting in front of us that is on, uh, uh, is on not even a handshake. You know what I mean? It can change on a dime. So our first interaction with you as, hey, maybe, maybe we could work something out. You're going to send us an offer. You send us an offer for $40,000. It was like you got punched in the face. Why, are you kidding me? This, these are the people that we, that want to work with us? So, you know, you got to understand, we became a little defensive with that. We're not trying to counter offer with something crazy, but we're trying to come up with something that would be reasonable to counter offer with you and we could document to some, some kind of reasonable expectation.
I'm sorry, who, who are you speaking for?
Who am I speaking?
Has the board decided we want to sell the land? I, I don't understand where this is coming from.
I didn't say that.
You said, we wanted to counter offer. I'm, I'm not trying to argue, I just, I would like some clarification. When did the board decide we wanted to counter offer?
When we barter back and forth, there is no offer to accept or not accept. That whole thing comes back through. The next question is, you barter back and forth, here's a package, do you want the package yes or no?
What if we don't want to sell the land and we have no reason to offer a counter offer? I, I just, I didn't realize the board was seeking the opportunity to offer a counter offer.
That's a different issue. That's a different issue. When we came back from that meeting, the four of us felt that this was a good thing for us to investigate, not necessarily pull the trigger and make it happen. But as board officials, we felt it is something we should look into. And that started these letters, we're looking into it. That's where this started. Okay? When we discussed it at that point with the board, okay, there was, there was not a hundred percent, let's sell it now, but a hundred percent, we need more information. That's what we, that's why this whole thing got to where we are. It comes from looking for more information.
Now, the developer again could be here tonight. He told me that he had his engineer trying to address some of your questions and concerns within that letter. And he's trying to put together a synopsis that, you know, he can present to you. He wished that he could have been here tonight, but his wife was taking ill. So he's on board. He wants to, you know, make you guys happy. He wants, he wants this deal to happen and he's, you know, paid his engineer to facilitate what, what he's got in hand. I don't know. I haven't seen it. I haven't been apprised of it. But again, he asked me to step forward and just see where we were at and the next logical step. I'm, I'm just trying to get a barometer, you know, a feel for this so we know where we're heading and if it's worth the effort at this point.
So I, I think, I would think just based on our conversation tonight, uh, you can sense that there are probably some mixed opinions on the board. I think that that's fair to say, right? Um, which is what makes, you know, this great that we have seven people who ultimately are going to work together to come to a decision. What I think what's trying to be communicated is we don't have enough, or the board does not have enough information to determine whether or not they even want to counter, whether or not they want to sell the land. And the, the reason that I penned this letter with the, the feedback from the board at our discussion at our January meeting is to hopefully acquire enough information that will then lead to a decision amongst the seven individuals here as to whether or not they want to either counter or entertain the, the possibility of even selling the land. So I don't think, and if I'm speaking inappropriately for the board, please stop me, I don't think the board is prepared to even discuss any kind of a counter, right? The discussion is, how is this going to impact the community? How is this going to impact the school? Is this something that we want to move forward with and will we have community buy-in if we do? Those are the, that's why we requested the information that we did, so that we can get those questions answered before moving forward and making a decision whether or not the board's interested in selling.
Let's, let's see what the, the developer's engineer has come up with as far as, you know, his letter that he, he was going to bring tonight. And as far as the, the land value, I would suggest, you know, an outside appraisal. You can get a comparative market analysis from any brokerage firm for land value.
But, but again, I don't think the board is there right now. The, the, the land, the land can be worth, the land can be worth $10 million. The board hasn't made a decision yet as to whether or not they want to sell the land.
I'm not saying, you know, I'm not asking if they want to sell or not. I understand it has to be voted on and so forth, but part of that letter was, you know, a reasoning for the $40,000 offer and to show, you know, you know, value behind it and so forth. And like I said before, you know, you don't ask the, the guy who's offering you, you know, like you said, to buy your house, what, what, you know, what he thinks your house is worth. You'd go to an outside appraiser before you took his word for it.
If I was, had my home up for sale, I agree with you, but you approached us there.
That's what I'm saying. I think we should take that $40,000 issue off the table with the developer. He's already, he's made the offer and you obviously feel it's not sufficient, which is your right. Let him put together his counter, you know, with the, the engineering and, and whatever it's, I, I get it. I don't know what he's put together for that, uh, if there is a, an impact study of sorts, you know, regarding that Newton property. But, uh, I'm not sure how it would directly reflect on, on this one. I mean, it's, it's, it's not exactly apples and oranges, but they're, they're two different projects, two different properties, two different traffic counts. It's, uh, you know, it's something that you'd have to take on specifically and, and pay a, an analyst, you know, someone who would come in and do a traffic count analysis and do a, uh, impact study. And again, we're planning on doing that for the planning board and zoning board and those impact studies cost on average 15 to 20,000. So we don't want to do two of them. I mean, that's what I'm trying to get at, you know, the cost just keep on escalating on something like this.
So the, the, the last correspondence that I, I sent to Mr. Wachtel was January 20th. Uh, I'm sorry, January 12th. We had not heard since, in my understanding, was that a phone call yesterday was made concerned that we hadn't responded. The board had responded. It's now March 15th, we heard on March 14th. And again, my understanding is if, if this is something that is time sensitive, um, I will share with you that the board's next meeting is the third week of April, uh, with a committee meeting the second week of April. I don't think that the board would entertain another conversation, at least until a significant amount of information is, is shared as far as rationale and impact. Um, I, I don't speak for the board. I'm just trying to facilitate, to facilitate, to move things forward. Um, you know, so my recommendation would be to talk to the developer, see what can be provided to the board to help make their decision as to whether or not they want to sell it all. And if the answer is yes, I'm certain that, that a, a counter can be discussed. And if the answer is no, then as soon as we have that answer, um, I would certainly be happy to, to, you know, provide that, another correspondence, you know, as soon as possible. So.
That's where we'll, that's where we'll go from there then.
And I, I also think what's important in that statement is your ideas of what would happen with that property.
Nothing.
But nothing.
That's why we originally said just dedicate it to the state for a buffer zone because we don't even, the developer doesn't want to own it.
Dedicated to the state as a, as can never be built on, ever and ever and ever, whatever, whatever you think those terms would mean would be helpful to us in making a decision.
It's, we'll, we'll pad that out and, you know, put that in writing and say that it will be a green zone, you know, for perpetuity. And that's really what we want. We didn't, we didn't want the property at all. We just, you know, originally, if you recall, I said dedicated to the state. We don't want to touch it. We don't want to own it. We have no reason to own it. We just need the buffer zone.
Okay.
Okay? So.
I, I, okay. All right.
All right. So I think your time indulgence.
Anybody else with questions?
Yeah, any other questions?
Matt?
I don't have many questions. I just have a, just a general feel that this so-called marriage is more or less us being a speed bump in your guys' way of trying to get a deal done and to just throw out in the air a number, not wanting to provide important data for us. It doesn't put, at least in my mouth, a clean taste. It just, you can't call something a marriage if both parties don't understand what's going on. We're a speed bump that you guys are trying to slowly go over and it just seems, um, little, just a little taken back and disrespectful to me personally. I'm not speaking for everybody. This data would be very helpful and I hope that that's something that we can obtain moving forward.
Like I said, the engineer's working on something and you'll have that post haste.
An engineer from the developer can say anything he wants.
Well, as I said before, you don't go to, you know, the prospective buyer and ask him what your house is worth. You go to an outside source. And that's what I said beginning of the meeting, you want to get fair market value, you get an outside appraisal and you get an outside impact study.
If we were interested in selling, like Mr. Jagdenham had mentioned, if you knocked at my door and wanted to buy my house, what is it based off of? Why do I have to go and do all that work?
I, I actually work in the multifamily industry. I've done new construction. I'm not going into this blindly. I completely understand what you mean by that. You know what I mean? Please understand information is all we have for the general public.
Right.
And the answers you've given today are your answers. They are what they are. That is why, I haven't had the, the opportunity to read that letter or what, what was specifically asked. Like you said, you're going off of vibes and feeling. And the vibe I get is we're asking very fair, reasonable questions and I'm getting a sense of getting defensive over it because this probably has been a challenging project for you for years on end. That's not so much our concern. You know, I'm a new board member. I care about the district and the school. So as you stated, uh, this marriage would have positive benefits directly to the school and ultimately that's what we're going to be concerned about. But nothing you've said today is really, really addressed anything regards to our school, uh, class, uh, student enrollment. So I understand this letter was that first bump to get to that point where you, we accept the presentation, but I agree with what Matt said and I, once again, I speak for myself as well. But, uh, yeah. Thank you.
All right.
Anyone else, questions? Jen, Mathieu? Deb? Financial person?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Heckman had indicated our next meeting is.
Our time and your indulgence.
Is April.
26.
April 26th is our next board meeting.
Okay. There you go. Yep. That's it.
Okay. That takes us to, uh, before we go to the next one, do we want to continue a discussion of this or do we want to?
I think it's listed or it should be in old business. I'd say let's get through our business items first.
Okay.
If that's okay.
That's fine. That's fine. Uh, that takes us to superintendent's report.
Okay. Um, we've had one half day of suspension, uh, for one student over the course of the month, uh, zero HIV investigations. Uh, I wanted to bring up, uh, we had our career day last Friday, um, which was another outstanding success. We had 16 vendors from throughout the community, uh, come to our school, share their expertise, share their passion, uh, with our students. Uh, and, and I have to say, our students were so well-prepared, uh, thanks to our teachers helping them draft questions, uh, engage the vendors in conversation. Um, special thanks, Ms. Choquette, uh, for coming and sharing your, your knowledge and expertise with us this year. Um, and, uh, thank you to Kathy Yankai, who again, planned and facilitated this, this event, working with all the outside vendors and the teachers and myself to develop the schedule. Uh, we look forward to doing it again, uh, next year and, um, yeah, very exciting stuff. Uh, the third item, I had mentioned to the board that I, um, shared a slideshow with all of you and it was last minute. I apologize, uh, you may not have had an opportunity to look through. Um, those that are watching, uh, through YouTube right now, uh, Mr. LaLama is displaying the pictures, uh, through the screen so that they can see at home. And it's of Sierra Leone, uh, which is a town in Africa that our school, through its fundraising efforts, uh, has been supporting, um, the education of several of, of their youth in that area. Um, that project has been led by, uh, Mr. Alan Shoren, uh, who is a substitute teacher and has been a paraprofessional and a long-term teacher replacement here in our school. Uh, and he's partnered with Mrs. Karen Henry, who's, uh, done a lot of, of service projects and, and fundraisers throughout the, the school and the community to help raise money for, um, these projects. Uh, in the pictures, you'll see, uh, that there was a school that was recently built, um, largely funded by the, uh, fundraisers that we had here throughout our little town of Stanhope. And most recently, uh, they built a well, uh, so that the students wouldn't have to use buckets, honestly, uh, walk about a mile down to the local stream to get water and then bring it back to the school. Uh, so, uh, those pictures, uh, some of them are of some of the, the people within, um, the community, the students, uh, the, the people that are building the well, uh, and they also, um, in the presentation that I shared with you, it's a little bit lengthy, but there's a video of thanks, uh, for all those that contributed and they specifically thank, uh, Stanhope School. Uh, so I thought it was a really exciting project. Ms. Henry just asked permission to do another clothing drive, uh, in the spring. Uh, and this again, to support Mr. Shoren would be to help them, um, develop a meal program for the students. Most of these students only eat one meal a day, uh, and it's provided, you know, at the school. Uh, they like to incorporate whether it's a take-home project or, or getting that second meal, maybe a breakfast, uh, at the school, uh, to help with their nourishment. So I just wanted to take a moment to thank everybody involved, our students, our parents, everybody that contributed. Uh, it's a really wonderful thing and it really highlights the S in VRS, which stands for service. So kudos. Um, next, our parent-teacher conferences were held on March, uh, 1st and 2nd. Um, this is the second time now that we've held hybrid conferences where parents had the option to, uh, virtually meet with their teachers, uh, or attend in person. We did have a nice, uh, number of people who did attend in person, uh, and obviously a good number of people who were, were virtual. Um, I, I have gotten some good feedback, uh, from some parents. I've gotten some questions that will be addressed, you know, the next go around for parent-teacher conferences. Uh, and, uh, you know, again, our, our main goal is to make sure that we're communicating effectively because we are doing wonderful things here. The kids are doing wonderful things here and when there are struggles, we want to communicate that as well so that we can develop that partnership between home and school. Um, the next item, kindergarten registration. We are at a very, very healthy number for kindergarten next year. We're at 25 students, uh, which is really good this time. Uh, we will, on average, I'd say, we, we probably get between five to eight more at least from now through September 1st. Some will happen in the spring, some will happen in the summer. Some people will move in, you know, last minute, looking to get their kids in school. Uh, so that's, that's a really good number for a district that has been suffering through, um, population loss, especially in the school. So hopefully we can start ramping those numbers up. Um, Read Across America Week, uh, was also a great success. Um, several, uh, programs and activities were held for the students such as, uh, the Green Eggs and Ham Breakfast. Uh, lots of parents and teachers volunteered to cook that morning. We had some students helping serve, which was wonderful. Uh, we did our reading train, uh, where teachers went from classroom to classroom, reading to different classes to give a different perspective on different books. Uh, mystery readers, uh, we had, uh, Mr. Bill and Mr. George, our cafeteria aides in that morning to read to our students as well as Mayor Zahaki, um, and Chief Pittiger, uh,[1785.33] to read to our students, as well as Mayor Zahaki and Chief Pittiger, which was excellent. The kids always are excited to see them. We did our March Madness of Books, Readers Theater, where the middle school students came in and they performed a, a play, I guess, from, from something that they're reading for the students. Poem in Your Pocket is always a big hit. Wanted to thank our staff, especially in Mr. Catallo's absence, you know, during that week. She did a lot to facilitate this, but they definitely had to, had to pick it up a little bit, and they did a wonderful job. They made it a great experience for the students and just wanted to bring that to light. And then the last item I have is just a public service announcement that our next Arbor Day program is going to be held on Friday, April 28th. Obviously, the board is all welcome to attend. Formal invitations will follow. It's another great event where we bring the community together, and we honor and recognize, whether it's a local organization or individual who's done great things in our town, county, and beyond. Do you remember last year, we honored and recognized Mrs. Davis for her 50 years of service teaching in the district? So unless you have any questions, that's my full report.
Anyone? Okay, moving on. Deb?
So our budget is due March 20th to the county. So it is insane right now in our department, but it's good stuff. We, and by that, I mean, we actually got our numbers in, and our S2 that we've been talking about losing money for years has actually gone up by 12%. So we were thrilled. I, I think I like ran into your office, Steve, like jumping, over 12%. But I was, I was really thrilled. And, and we also had to, last year, we lost tax dollars, well, I, I don't want to say lost tax dollars. We had to give tax dollars back to the community for Chapter 44, which is our health care, because we saved money on switching plans. They then sent us a letter saying that we had to give back to the community again, and I said, I think their math was not mathing. So we did some, some due diligence. We sent in a, we challenged it. I showed them how our numbers worked out, and we thought they might be wrong, and they did agree with us. So we do not have to give money back to the taxpayer. Not that I don't thank you all for all the money that you give, but as you know, we've been losing funds in the past, and we can really like to keep our budget at the 2% that we're allotted. So I was really happy to report that. The project is moving right along. We have, if I'm not mistaken, off the top of my head, I believe we have five, we have three approvals for projects to move forward, and one that we're approving this evening. We have the faculty room upgrades, the roof upgrades, the bathroom upgrades, already approved media center bid is being approved this evening. We also got a bid yesterday for the basketball blacktop. It came in way over budget and what we think that should be spent on it. So we are actually rejecting that offer and pushing it off to the side, just to, you know, because of all the things we have on that list, that's not the most important right now. We want to make sure that we're getting all the major educational components taken care of.
By the way, just kicking my rationale real quick?
No, not at all.
So we had a really great discussion and a lot of great ideas from, from Debbie and our architect. My main concern isn't so much that it came in over budget, because I think it is a project that we can still do, even if, if bid again at that price. My concern is that there are more important projects that we have to worry about, such as the HVAC project. So we, we brainstormed, and we decided we'd like to bid out the HVAC project next winter, ultimately, to start in the spring and into the summer, and ensure that that doesn't go way over budget to where we won't have funds left, you know, to do anything else.
I, I just want to chime in.
Yes.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
We're actually going to go out to bid for the HVAC project this spring. Rod, I'm sorry, I just didn't want to.
No, you're good.
The, Rod grants have come out, and because Rod grants have come out, which is something I don't have to get in to bore you to death.
We don't qualify for them, so.
Well, right, but we, everybody who wants to do a major capital reserve project is going to be putting in for them. That means contractors are going to be jacking their prices up, because so many people are going to be doing projects, and you know, supply and demand. So we're actually going to go out before those are approved, get those numbers set, and then do the project next summer, but with our numbers ready to go. So sorry, I didn't mean to jump on.
No, I appreciate it. I really do.
I didn't want to come in the spring with being like, we're going out for bid, and they'll be like, what just happened?
We're potentially working on the project in the spring. Just wanted to make sure that we have enough funds to do the HVAC, and that we don't spend them on the asphalt project before we move in that direction, so.
And that is, that's where we are.
What was the, how far over was it? Was it crazy over?
Like $60,000.
Over?
Over.
It was double over. I was just going to say, I thought it was.
Yeah, over.
Budgeted it was.
Now luckily, luckily, a lot of the projects that, what we estimated what we would have it at, are coming in lower, which is great, but we are assuming that our HVAC is going to come in way higher than anticipated. So we do have a buffer, you know, in, in any construction project, that whether you're working on your house or a major one, that happens all the time, but we're not willing to just let that go just yet until we see the numbers for the HVAC project, and then we'll kind of back it in at the end. So. Anybody have any questions for me?
Just want to interject. It's been a fun process, and there is a lot involved. Debbie and Carissa and Kim and the business office have done really a wonderful job just keeping things moving. As you can, as you all understand, it's been a kind of a wild winter, short-staffed, just kind of, you know, hands in a little bit of everything. But the business office has been our rock, and I really appreciate all, all the, the efforts and just staying on top of things. It's, it's really been a pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to committee reports. First one is personnel, curriculum, school climate, and culture. Jen?
So one of these months, I will get to say that we are not seeking employment from anybody. This is not the month. You will see that we accepted resignation of one of our paraprofessionals. I am, I am sure that we're working on replacing that person, if we have not already, but that seems to be the revolving door that we have going.
We're in better shape right now than we've been all year.
That's awesome. Love to hear that. Don't jinx yourself, but would not be good. You will see on tonight's agenda that the internship for the intern that Ms. Coppola had prior is now coming back from, this is actually retroactive, no, sorry, next year, coming back in January, wait, starting. I need my glasses. I apologize. So I'm going to start over. She's starting this summer, going through Christmas, coming back in January, through May. And she'll work with Ms. Coppola and do all the things she needs to do, all the many different hats she wears.
This is a new intern. So the two that she's had finishing, and this is somebody else that's coming in.
It's not my day today.
It's okay.
Mrs. Benedetto, she got excited over math. Middle school had a math club, so now she wanted to offer fourth and fifth grade math club. So that is on tonight's agenda of voting. I think it's a great thing. Anytime you get kids excited about math, the more kids we can do that with, the better. And last but not least, this is good, unless you tell me otherwise, we have retroactively approved the appointment of a part-time custodian. How's it working out?
It's been great.
He's great.
Awesome. Other than that, you'll see on the agenda, summer programs. So we're able to bring those back. That's exciting. They had great success last summer, parents, students, everybody was happy. So we're glad to be able to offer that again. You covered the other things, so I don't need to. And we're good to go. That's it.
I just had one question. I looked at the contract for that with Seton, Seton Hall, I believe, is where she's coming from. I've never seen a contract like that before for an intern.
Yeah.
I mean.
It's pretty extensive.
Oh, goodness.
We double-checked a lot of the insurance questions. You know, I asked Debbie and Carissa to look into some of that stuff. Everything cleared, everything was okay. The woman from Seton Hall even shared with me that they drafted it as a multi-year contract, not with any expectation that we continue. But to be honest with you, we've, we've had such great relationships with these, these universities and these colleges, that once they place a student, typically, they want to come back and they ask to replace. And that's a good thing. That means that the individual had a good experience, the university, the college felt as though we did a nice job preparing them. And to be honest with you, you know, we're, we're an institute of learning, and that does not limit us to preschool through, through eighth grade. If we can help the future, shape the future educators and counselors, you know, of this, this state, county, we want to be able to influence that. And we welcome, not just the help, but we welcome the opportunity to teach these, these young people. So it's a, it's really, it's a rewarding experience.
Anybody with questions for Jen? That takes us to business services, facility, facilities, and technology. Kenya?
So between Debbie.
I know, sorry. I do it every time.
No, it is awesome, because you do have, you do a good job explaining all these number things. So we did talk about how fast the projects are moving along, and given the summer program that is starting, we being able to extend the summer program one extra year, we have to program all those new projects around the project, around that summer program. So you're looking around the schedule to see how we can fit the program and the, and the projects.
Yeah, so just recently, we have been going, Steve tried, I tried, reaching out to Anthony, our architect. He's very responsive. It's the contractors that are not necessarily responsive. We were hoping they could give us a timeline, and we can work around them, but they weren't getting back to us. Anthony was, but the contractors weren't in a timely manner. So Steve already drafted the summer schedule, and now they have to work around us. So we did try to do it the opposite way, to make it, you know, but now, now they have to figure it out.
It's very possible that we're going to have to move throughout the building during the summer. It's not ideal, you know, but if we have a classroom that we're using in the, in the first grade section, and they're working on the roof up there, for example, you know, for that week, we may have to move to a different classroom. We're just going to have to be flexible. We might have to utilize the gym, use more outdoors for our, our camps. But at the end of the day, we got such great responses from the parents that, that they wanted their kids to attend these camps. We felt strongly that we needed to get them on the, on the agenda, on the schedule, so that they don't go elsewhere, and they, and they come here. And you can't beat our price.
Yeah. I would expect 100%, a lot more population coming into the summer programs this year, given the success in 2022.
Yeah, we hope so.
Yeah. So yeah, so we discussed that. We also spoke about the S2 funding going up, which you already explained, and we discussed also having a new part-time custodian, and some collaboration between the high school and us for our, one of our custodians, supporting one of their bus drivers. And that was it. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you. That takes to me Sussex County Ed Services. I did leave a packet with your stuff. There is the, what we call our board briefs, that comes out from the superintendent, just highlights everything there. Just real quickly, we're in the same position we are at this school. We're in the middle of doing, we're finished up our budget. We are doing our CSA evaluation. One of, one of the very exciting things we got, we just learned that we got permission to open up a second project search at Hackettstown Hospital. So we'll have two, two operations there. What's very nice about that is that the supervisors are the same between Hackettstown Hospital and Newton Hospital. And they are the key people in this type of program going and going as well as it is, is the supervisors. It's the same supervisors across, and we're just so excited, and we're even able to start the program up as early as this September. They're out there now, making presentations to schools. We're looking in to bring in this section, the western section of Morris County, and parts of Warren, and even some parts of Hunter and Central now, and getting kids involved in that. And the other thing that should be coming out soon, maybe, I don't even know if you got a notice from Andrea about the professional development for Paris, and putting together a module system where you could come to, we can come to your district and do professional development for the Paris, which has a whole set of modules, a pricing thing. But it's, it's just nice, because that seemed to be one of the things that came from some surveys that we did, is that it's hard to get staff development for your professional, for your Paris, and this would help the Paris, and it would give them that extra piece that they need to better perform their duties. So we're excited about that. There's a whole mess of other things in this thing, if you want to take a chance to read it when you get home. Next is the board president's report. This time of the year is always crazy. We had several budget meetings, like one of those, I don't remember which one, it was 44 pages, what was that? No, 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 not that one. I'm sorry. That was Sussex Ed Service.
Oh, okay. I was like, I feel like I'm missing.
Got caught in that one from.
I'm missing some pages.
No, 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 no. But we reviewed the budget, we did the webpage, several discussions on budgets, and several discussions on the project. So it's been a very, very quick month, between last board meeting and this board meeting. Anyone with questions? Takes us to our first public session. Unfortunately, there is no public present, so we will move on. Travel and workshops, next item. Anybody with questions? I believe they both attended the same one, right? It was on Center, Center, Center.
Yeah. It was a virtual workshop, I believe.
Yep. Minutes for approval? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Now, these are the budgets from the February 15th regular meeting and the February 15th executive session. This is a voice vote. Is there anyone with questions on it? Any changes, deletions, edits? Okay, this vote is to approve the February 15th regular meeting and February 15th special executive session. Minutes as written. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Abstained? Next is our 23, 24 budget adoption. That's items one and two. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion on the budget?
Just thank you for all the work that went into putting it together.
Yes, of course.
My pleasure.
One special note, I thought you were going to mention it, that when we were going out for the referendum, the interest rate, the estimate for the interest rate was 4.5. That was the estimate. When the bonds were sold, they were sold at 3.87. So that's even a greater savings for the taxpayer, as the total debt over the 20 years will be less, less than anticipated. Any discussion on the budget or on the travel and related expense reimbursement paragraph? That is required by law to be in there? That's a, that's a requirement, that travel and related expense reimbursement be in there?
I do have a question, Debbie Financial. For the, how does the increase in S2 fundings affect the budget that we are approving right now?
It's better, because we had to cut funds, not, not staff, but we really were kind of skimming off a little bit, and we were able to put back some necessary. It would have been a little tight squeeze next year. So that 12% really was very helpful for us.
So it is already accounted for in this number?
Oh, absolutely. Yes. Absolutely.
Any other questions? Discussion? Vote, please.
Mrs. Choquette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Valardo?
Yes.
Mr. Jagnum?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharfstein?
Yes.
Mr. Moscatello?
Yes. That's great. Thank you.
I'm just, can I just say one thing? You know what I'll do? I always bring a cheat sheet, and by always, I, this is only my second year here, so my second presentation, but I'll bring a cheat sheet as to exactly how those numbers came about to go into that chart, so you can see what they're made up of. Will that be helpful for you?
Yeah, and you have that Excel sheet, right?
I do, I have that Excel sheet, yes. Um, just, just for a quick tutorial, just to make it really quick, the special revenues is federal funds. The, um, the general fund, well, the, the revenues, you go to general fund, you go down to where it says revenues, less anticipated revenues, that's our miscellaneous funds and some of our state funding. Debt service is obvious, right? And so, that's really kind of what makes, makes those things up. It's, it's the extra funding and plus the taxpayer dollars. Just to give you a little idea.
Okay. Next item is administrative action items, one through three. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. Vote, please.
Mrs. Choquette?
That is a yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnam?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharfstein?
Yes.
Mr. Moscatello?
Yes. Next item is educational action items. It's item one plus items two and three from the addendum. Motion? Mr. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? Um, under number two, I, I did not get a chance to see these. The dates, are you doing the same thing with the, uh, section, section for elective areas?
So, we'll have our summer camps.
Summer camps?
So, last year, we did our summer camps the first few weeks. However, we are gonna switch it. We're gonna do our academic accelerate, um, learning acceleration programs first, and then the last three weeks of the seven, we'll do our summer camps. We got some feedback that it was challenging for students who wanted to participate, or students in ESY, our special education programs, that wanted to participate in the summer camps, were missing too much instruction to attend the, the art and the music and the STEM. Whereas, they'll have the week separate from the ESY program where they can actually do both and it'll be seven weeks worth of instruction.
Anyone else, questions? Vote, please.
I do have a question, though. Did, did you select already the, um, the teachers that are gonna be hosting the?
No, so, we didn't advertise for teachers because the programs aren't approved yet. I didn't want to assume that they would be approved. Uh, so, that's all ready to go. Uh, as soon as I get in the office tomorrow and we're settled, uh, that will go out to the staff. They'll understand that we need to expedite that process, because we got a late start this, this winter. Um, and I'm hopeful in April that we'll have teachers approved for most of these positions.
Take the vote then, please.
Okay. Mrs. Choquette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnam?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharfstein?
Yes.
Mr. Moscatello?
Yes. Next is personal action items, one through five.
Um, for item number four, for the math club, is that an?
We need a motion?
Oh, we didn't get there, okay.
Sorry, we need a motion.
Second.
Should we have a first and a second?
We do.
Okay. I'm sorry, Kenya.
Yeah, so for the math club program, is that after school or within the classroom?
After school.
After school?
Yeah.
I do have a question. Is it a paid internship?
Uh, the person coming from?
Seton Hall?
No, it's, it's not paid. It's, uh, it's part of their?
Curriculum.
Yeah, curriculum, their, their college program.
Thank you.
So, do, do kids choose to go to this math club?
So, um, I haven't nailed down exactly with Ms. Benedetto how she's going to run this. I think, one, so aside from wanting to do obviously something after school, I think she's trying to target different kids during different weeks. Um, whereas the middle school was, was more, more club-based, uh, where they're still gonna be doing fun activities, uh, but I think that she's trying to target different kids to try to help boost their, um, you know, boost their abilities, help with the concepts. So, I haven't gone through that completely with her yet.
Any other questions? Vote, please.
Mrs. Choquette?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnam?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharfstein?
Yes.
Mr. Moscatello?
Yes. Next is business service action items, one through nine, and then addendum items ten through twelve. Give you a second to look it over?
Um, I'd like to, if you don't mind, discuss my own, my own stuff here. Number seven, um, we have been discussing, um, investing the bond money while it sits. I, I spoke to a couple of different places, the, uh, and we decided, if approved, to go with a New Jersey ARM. They have a great rate right now and, um, they work with, um, other school districts, um, to, to do the exact same thing. I believe, obviously, the rate fluctuates, but it's currently at about a four point three with no minimum to be in there, which is nice. They can wire the money directly to our accounts for us. We do quarterly meetings. They can also, uh, invest our capital reserve for us. And, um, they're just, uh, they just, they were, they were the, the, the best bet for our long, the long run, um, going forward. Uh, TD Bank offered us four point five percent, which was obviously higher. You do need to have a minimum of five million in there, um, and that was gonna go lower very quickly. So.
Are there any withdrawal penalties?
There are none.
Gil, we need a motion before we can start talking about it.
Thank you so much, I jumped the gun.
Sorry.
No, that was my phone.
You did say you were doing it.
I got excited.
I got away and got caught up in your answer. So, you're right, let's start with the motion.
Motion.
Thanks.
Second.
Thanks.
Okay.
Sorry about that, everybody. We were talking about investing, I got a little too carried away.
Uh, number, number eleven, I'm a little?
We gotta clean up number eleven, I'm in the same boat, Gil.
Okay, talk to me.
Because it says media center renovations and then we're rewarding the bid for roof renovations.
It should not say roof renovations. It should say media center, and I will correct that on the minutes with a strike through.
It's in two places.
Yep, I will correct it. I actually corrected it on my end and I must have sent out the wrong one to Carissa, so my apologies.
Are the numbers correct?
The numbers are absolutely correct. Yes, promise. And the, and it also does state that the basketball court renovation was rejected, so.
Pardon me?
Uh, it mentions that the basketball court renovation was rejected. So, the verbiage is correct, just the, uh, the place was, was wrong. Thank you for pointing that out.
Okay. Um, it's just?
That is crazy that they went that high.
The title of their company, uh, they're doing all the, all the work in the media center?
They are. Well, they have, um, subcontractors, which are in, in it, that do some work for them as well.
So, but they're, the price is three ninety-five, they pay their subcontractors.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's in the bid.
Absolutely.
And the seventeen for the alternate?
The seventeen thousand alternate one is to do the sync in the media center.
Thank you.
Do we have a rendering or anything of the media center and what exactly they bid on?
Uh, we have, I guess you, I guess you would call it the rendering, right? Like a, a blueprint, I can certainly share that out. I don't know if I, what I was given, um, was in CAD software and we can't open that currently in most places here. But I'll see if we can, Nick was able to get some of that stuff out for her, it was like super, super tiny.
They should be able to convert it to a PDF, send it to us, yeah.
It'd just be nice to know what we actually put in there, where or how, yeah.
And with the sync, do you know if that's under or over?
It is over. I, Anthony was here yesterday and I brought up, you know, your questions and concerns about, um, going through the floor. Uh, he said it would significantly in, in, increase the price, uh, and because of the placement, he, he has some serious concerns about doing that. Uh, but I did say that I'm sure you'd want to at least have a conversation with him, you know, about the, the reasons why. But he, he felt very strongly that that was, that was the best way to go.
See, I, I, I just think it's, it's very important that a room like that has a sync. Just, you're gonna get, you're gonna get something in there that you're gonna be required to have an eye wash station, just something simple like that, so.
And I guess that's why I'm confused on exactly what we're approving here, right? Because we haven't seen this.
So, I would assume it's, it's the specs that the architect drew out, uh, distributed to the contractors to bid on.
I mean, I, I haven't, I know anybody else seen the schematic of it. I mean, I saw the media center when we were first looking at architects' proposals.
You're referring to the media center? Yeah, you're referring to the technology lab that we just kept talking for a long time?
The, the Makerspace.
Oh, yeah, that's interesting.
We haven't seen anything.
I mean, if, if we, so, if what we could do is I could distribute, um, whatever I can get from them for everybody, uh, I'd be happy to entertain a walkthrough if you don't feel comfortable voting tonight.
Especially if they haven't, if you haven't been able to see it either, because it's in CAD, right?
No, I, I mean, I've seen it, I, we've walked it, we've lived it, we've drawn it with them. Um, you know, the bids were yesterday, uh, and I guess the rush was trying to get it approved so that we can get everything ordered and, and, and moving forward. Uh, so, if, if the board doesn't feel comfortable voting tonight, I completely understand that. My request would be that we, um, after getting access to, to whatever you're looking for, possibly holding a special meeting to get it approved soon, because our April meeting isn't until the twenty-sixth.
No, I guess I understood, right, everything we were going out to bid for, and when you talk about things like a bathroom renovation, right? You can kind of get your hands around that, but the media center's gonna be the new heart of the school.
Yeah, no, I understand.
I think it would be very helpful for us to understand what we decided on, what's going in there, what grade levels, Makerspaces, because last we talked about that, we didn't know any of that, what we were doing. We had no idea.
The only thing is, is that I, the, there was involvement by the staff in this, in that layout, am I correct?
Yeah, I mean, listen, Mateo brings up a great point. I, I hadn't brought any drawings or renderings or anything to you. And I think, honestly, it's just been a process of, of moving things along. Like I said, the bid was yesterday. That being said, I, I completely understand if we want to put this one on hold, uh, I, I just don't want to wait until the twenty-sixth to approve it, because that's gonna put us, you know, behind the eight ball. So, I'm okay either way, I'm here. We can, you know, we can have a?
A special meeting?
A meeting if, if you all prefer not to vote on it tonight. In fact, I mean, if you wanted to stay ten minutes, I can probably pull, it wouldn't be perfect, because we've made changes, but I can pull it out before you leave tonight and I can walk the media center with you and explain kind of what we're looking to do. So, um, yeah, my apologies, I wasn't looking to hide information from you.
I know, I know, it's just, like I said, there was so much conversation around, is it, is it the Makerspace and it's built around, you know, is it 3D printing, is there this, is there that? Like, there were just so many questions that?
So, as you walk into the media center, right, I'll give you a real, brief verbal layout of what we're looking to. So, where the circulation desk currently is, okay, you walk in directly to the left, that circulation desk is coming out, that's where we're going to have, and we haven't identified the technology yet. So, this cost right here that we're voting on is not furniture and technology, okay? It's, it's renovations and construction, okay? So, really has less to do with programming, um, than what you would think. So, if you walk in to the left, there's going to be twelve, uh, computer stations that will be facing the, the wall by the hallway. Uh, we plan to put two, two large ViewSonic or at least screens up there with the idea that Ms. Pfeifer can stand behind the students, which will be in between the Makerspace section, uh, with the larger, the high butcher block tables, which is what we're envisioning, um, and wirelessly kind of control so the kids can kind of view and she can direct them on those computers facing that way. When you walk in directly to the right, if you remember, if you've been in there recently, there's like a, a temporary wall right there. We're gonna be walling out that section, putting, um, not a roof, but a ceiling on it. That's gonna be a, an area for broadcasting. It's gonna be broken into two different sections, uh, section where the broadcasting equipment will be and a section for like the, the green screen, you know, area so that we can, um, uh, get into that.
Soundproof room and a green screen room, one video, one audio.
Right, so, um, the decision had been made, we had gone back and forth, we are gonna be removing pretty much all library books from that space. Initially, we wanted the idea of keeping some sort of a small library area, but when it came down to it, we just felt as though that space was better used for something else. Um, we have classroom libraries in every single classroom, leveled books, the books are not gonna be thrown out, obviously, we're going to hold on to the ones that the teachers want, we'll circulate them into their, their classroom libraries, but removing those bookshelves will give us another opportunity, um, to create, you know, more space. I did leave out where the, uh, computers are going to be against that wall and underneath the screen. That's where we intend on the 3D printers, regular printers. Again, that technology that we developed as we redraft our curriculum, bringing that in and storing that there. In the current office where Mr. Llama and Mr. Neal reside, that's gonna be, uh, a closed off, locked off storage area where we plan on having, um, large, uh, cabinetry, large shelving, um, everything on casters, all the furniture that we get, we're planning on putting on casters so that we could easily move in and out, so that furniture, so that we can bring it out. If there's the, the Lego robots or, you know, any of the materials that, that Ms. Pfeifer would need to use, that way she could take it out so that the kids could easily access without having to go in that closet. Uh, if you go further towards the windows, all the way to the right where our copiers current are, currently are, we're gonna be building, um, larger storage space for all the resource, I mean, we have boxes and crates of resources and I'm sure that we'll have more, that we kind of want tucked away. As Ms. Sharfstein said, this is going to be a, a focal point of our school. You know, we don't want it to look like we're just kind of throwing our stuff all over the place. So, those will be, uh, closed off closet area, uh, shorter tables next to that, um, for, you know, our younger population, so that they're not sitting at high tops and butcher block, uh, in the Makerspace area. And then the far corner where that one exit is, if you can envision it, um, a small read aloud section, um, carpet, some comfortable furniture, uh, teacher's chair, rocking chair so that, you know, we don't lose that, that library, small school kind of feel. That's already incorporated a lot in our STEM program for our younger kids, our younger population. The program that we, uh, bought into several years ago, EIE, engineering is everywhere, requires a lot of that, read aloud, identifying a problem in the story, and then the project is based on solving that problem. Trying to think, uh, as far as the ceiling is concerned, it's gonna be cloud-based, so they're gonna be removing all of the, uh, ceiling tiles, uh, going directly up to that ceiling. And then the tiles that they're going to install will be cloud sections. So, you'll be able to kind of see through that, you know, I guess the ceiling will be painted, I believe, black, uh, we haven't made that decision yet. Speakers, lighting, electric coming down from the ceiling as well.
Floor in there, right, a lot of those robots and makers have to have flooring that it can move on.
Floor's gonna be brand new, do you remember, I'm yelling to Nick behind the wall, is it VCT? It's, it's a, it's a heavy? It's LVT, yes. It's a, it's a, they described it as a luxury vinyl. Yeah, a wood plank look, um, with a blue, gray, white theme design in the floor.
It's good, because it's easily replaceable if it gets damaged as well.
So, again, I apologize, I know that I didn't give you a real descriptive account, um, happy to kind of go through, so.
Do you anticipate then holding STEM classes in the Makerspace or she? Okay, so, full time.
So, that's, so that was one of the things we stressed with the architect, that we wanted to have a space that can be utilized by more than one class at one time. So, if Ms. Pfeifer is using the computer section in the Makerspace, we wanted the opportunity for somebody else to come into the class and use that far area, um, which we've done in our media center before. And I think opening it up and removing bookshelves and kind of creating more space. Yep, yep, yeah, so, and again.
So, I guess the questions around the sync then become, I don't hear of anything in So I guess the questions around the sink then become, I don't hear of anything in there that's going to require an eye wash, like a sink.
Not so much an eye wash. That's not something that we're necessarily concerned about.
They use on 3D printing.
Yeah, that's the only thing that I was going to say is what kind of 3D printing you're doing to know you need a sink.
When you start doing a model space, you do have some mechanical machinery. You could have a drill press, right? You could have.
That's not what I was hearing. That's why I asked the question, that we were going that far with the drill press and a K8 or anything like that.
So the eye wash station, although it's something that down the road possibly, you know, but it's it's not something that we're installing right now. The sink is more for cleanup.
Well, and you're, depending on what type of 3D printing you do, you're going to need access. So if you do the small kind, not the large kind, you need access to water, other chemicals. So to Gil's point on the eye wash station, and I only say this because.
I just said that as an example that you would need that for. My thought when I talked about it with Steve, because I brought it up to him, I said, does it have a sink? And he said, no. And I said, you know, you may not need it the first year or two it's open, but if it ever expands or anything, and you have the need for water, it'll cost you three times the amount it's going to cost you putting it in as part of the.
Ms. Pfeifer was pretty adamant about wanting a sink from the get go. The issue that we run into is that there is no plumbing on the entire perimeter of that room, you know? When we first were talking, we couldn't remember if the bathroom in the classroom next to it was on that side and it's not. So, and, you know, one of the points Anthony made, you know, about our architect, you know, about his comfort level with having that pump up system is, you know, you're not going to be expelling waste, right? It's really just going to be water. And it's not going to be so often that it's going to be pumping all the time. He said for the difference in cost to go the route of going through the floor would be so significant that he felt as though we wouldn't even be able to afford it in the estimates that he provided, so.
What type of ventilation with regard to, so you're going to be doing 3D printing? And depending on how much you're doing and how long that runs, because a lot of 3D printed stuff has to run for hours. It's not like, the kids might design it, but when you go to print it, you could be talking a long time. It gives off a lot of different, I don't know whether it's chemicals or what, I'm just going to say it smells. So what kind of ventilation do we have?
I know that the real, a lot of the real heavy duty printers and equipment that the high school programs use to require that type of ventilation. My understanding, because we did ask the question, is, you know, what we're looking at likely would require very little. And I think another piece to it was just how large and open that space is. Again, I defer to the experts.
I'm only speaking from personal experience of having a husband who has them at home.
My gut is it's all going to be the little boxes because you don't want the kids being able to grab it.
True, so that would give off less.
They're going to be small enough so that they can fit along that wall and between the computers.
Yep, that's probably.
Okay, that helps. Thank you.
Okay, the question comes, do we, that helps, thank you. Do we want to table item 11?
I'm okay with the description and that for this, right? Like I said, I didn't understand it was technology or not, so that's me. I'm okay voting.
You're okay voting.
I'm okay.
So just to, before you go forward, you said that this is only for the structure, right? Not for the technology itself? So on the original budget that we got, there was a total of around $420 plus some contingency money in there. And if this is $395, what portion of that is going to be allocated to technology? How much extra money we're going to have to be included in here? Or was the original one only the infrastructure?
I have that spreadsheet in here somewhere. Forgive me. We just got it from Anthony yesterday.
The total for the media center, not including technology, was actually $478,800. Like $478,800. That includes, you know, the fees out to the architect, the engineer, and as well as contingency fees. So we came in significantly less. But there is a separate technology line for upgrades.
That's what I'm going to answer.
Right.
So the furniture is really the piece of the STEM lab, the cost piece, that's missing from this because that wasn't part of the bid. You know, we had last week, somebody out from School Specialty, she's designing a room with the furniture for us. We haven't gotten it yet. She's expecting it next week, so. But I'll do, whether you decide to vote today or not, I'll get you as much as I can so that you can get an idea of what we're doing in that space. And when I get a rendering for the furniture, I'll share that as well. Yeah, my, again, my sincerest apologies. It wasn't in an effort to hide anything from you. It was just kind of trying to move things along.
Are you okay to vote?
I am, I am.
Kenya? Matt?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. You had mentioned taking the library books out and then distributing a certain select few to the classrooms. Will we have an opportunity to know what those books are getting distributed to the classrooms?
I mean, we have a general list because we use Follet software for our library system. That was another piece of the decision to not keep the books in there because in order to keep that software, it's actually really, it's pretty expensive. We can certainly probably create that list and share it with the board. As far as the details of which teacher is taking which, you know, which books, you know, I haven't really got, put much thought into how we're going to do that just yet. But we can certainly give you a list of the books that we have remaining in the library. To be quite honest with you, so many of them are so outdated that it's very possible we'll donate a lot of them, that they won't even be wanted by the teachers. But yeah, I'll see if I can get as much of that as I can to you.
Thank you.
I did have a question for Debbie in regards to number seven. I apologize for backtracking. What was that interest rate again?
I believe it was 4.3.
Is it insured?
Yes.
Do you know how much?
Top of my head, I don't. I should have brought the information.
It's okay. Is it backed by FDIC?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Anyone else with questions? So this is the, we're voting on the full motion, which was agenda items one through nine and addendum items 10 through 12, 12 being the rejection of the bid for the basketball court renovation.
Number 11, I still would like to see, I'm okay to vote, but I would like to see the plans or whatever you have more information on that. And then for number 12, are those alternative above that base bid? Is that what it is?
That additional 13. Oh, okay, so alternate one is for the fence. There are additions too. So our base price for them to just do the paving would have been $115. Then the second, like add on, if you will, was for a new fence around the basketball court. And the second addition would have been new backboards, like new hoops themselves. But we stopped at the base bid. Nothing else mattered at that time.
We only the budget when we had the gentleman here, you know, he brought the point that, but we budgeted it was already too much and this is more than double that.
Yes.
On the base bid, I mean, I know we rejected it, but was that for them to rip it all out and put new?
Yes, yes, yes.
Feel a little better about that.
And it also takes into consideration, you know, when you're doing a much smaller space, the price is higher because they're still coming in, taking their man hours to do all the work. You'd actually get a better rate if they were doing like a way bigger project.
Yeah, we're beyond just kind of like resurfacing what's out there.
No, I was glad to hear that it was.
Any other questions or comments on this motion? Matt, roll call, please.
I need one more note to write down before it escapes my brain. One second, please. Thank you. Okay, here we go. Mrs. Choket?
That is a yes.
Okay, Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
I'll abstain from number nine, approve use of facilities request as per attached just due to my personal involvement in some of the organizations requesting that use.
Okay.
But a yes for everything else.
Mr. Velardo?
I will also follow Tom Su and abstain from number nine.
Okay. Mr. Gagnon? Mrs. Sharfstein? Mr. Moscatello?
Yes. Okay, that takes us to new business.
If you don't mind me just real quick knocking out a couple of items for new business, if that's okay. Number one, I wanted to, I don't know if everybody got the email from school boards that Kathy Halawa has resigned her position in Sussex County. I just wanted to take a minute to share that with you if you hadn't already seen it and thank Kathy for the time that she's given us in Stanhope. Personally, I think she's been a wonderful resource. She's always been accessible to me when I've had questions. I think the business office the same. Just wanted to take a minute to, you know, thank her for everything that she's done in Sussex for literally as long as I've been working in Sussex, which is the nine years I've been here, so.
To add to that, if you guys are comfortable, I'd like to send her just a card of thanks from the board on the way we have.
That'd be wonderful.
She is coming, not as a member of school boards, but just as an invited representative to our superintendent's roundtable meeting on Friday where we can more formally, as a county, thank her for the time and effort that she's given us here. Hopefully they can find somebody to take that spot. She, I wouldn't be, I don't know from any conversations with her, but I wouldn't be shocked if her resignation came because of all of the extra work that's kind of been handed down to her over the last few years. She was doing several counties and it was quite overwhelming.
I had about a one hour conversation with her the other day, and that's exactly it. You know, if you want to get a job done, give it to the busy person. They just kept giving it to her. She said after working 14 hours a day, can't do it.
The next item we, I have on the agenda is next year's bell schedule and the school's start time. We are going to be continuing, but in a much larger capacity, partnering with Lenape Valley, creating what I'm calling a zero period for our eighth grade students. And I believe seventh grade students possibly for the band. I don't think that's been quite decided yet. Where they can go up to Lenape, take a class before our first period class. Lenape, at least for right now, has shared that they will transport the students to and from at zero cost to us. It'll be an opportunity for them to knock out, for example, a French I so that they can go to French II as a freshman instead of having to start from the very beginning, a course that we don't necessarily offer. We're hoping to grow that. We're hoping that there will be more opportunities and more electives available, you know, as per one of the district goals. In order to make that work more smoothly, I just wanted to give you all a heads up that I'm going to be recommending that we move the start time of school back about 15 minutes next year. Currently, we open the doors at 7:45 for kids to get into homeroom at 8 o'clock. I'm going to be asking that we push it back, open the doors at 8, get into homeroom at 8:15, which would push our dismissal time back to 2:50. Still very much within the average arrival and dismissal times in the counties. I think we'd still be getting in before and getting out before the Byram schools. And again, it'll give all of the students who are up at Lenape taking a class an opportunity to get back before homeroom rather than rushing and coming in late to the first period. So that hasn't been, other than to a select number of staff, that really hasn't been communicated throughout. So expecting that you may get some questions, I thought this was the appropriate forum to initially let you know as a board that this is something that I'm investigating and likely will provide some more formal recommendations within the next couple of months.
I think the sooner you decide on this and get it to the public, I think the more lead type people have for making arrangements for next year, the better, so.
And I understand that this will likely help some people and possibly hurt some people, right? If you're able to drop your child off right at school and rush off to work and get there on time, that 15 minutes might make a difference. Whereas, you know, if you need to use aftercare for 20 minutes because you can't get back here on time from work, this might actually, you know, help you if you're able to, you know, keep the kids in school a little longer. So I understand that there's going to be challenges, any kind of changes, which is why I want to make sure that we do our due diligence and get it out there and communicate effectively to everybody.
What time does period zero begin?
Seven, is it 7:13? I thought it was like 7:06?
It's either 7:12 or 7:13.
So the first bell is 7:06. I think it's 7:13. The way I mapped it out with Dr. Rossi and Mr. Nussbaum, who's their transportation coordinator, that it'll get those students here by 8:12, 8:13, strategically towards the end of that carousel time so that we don't have a bus coming through and slowing everybody down at the very beginning. So I'm personally okay if they're a minute or two late to homeroom. I don't want them being late to their first period class.
What challenges do you face if you keep the doors opening at the same time, but you just pretty much push back staffing, right?
Our full-time contractual staff, they're here for X number of minutes currently at 7:40 to 2:45. So I need to give them some time to get in and get settled so that when and if I open the building up, I need to, we strategically have people lined up at all of the doors, the crosswalks, all of the intersections here so that we don't lose kids or allow them the opportunities to get themselves in some trouble.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Just want to add with respect to the partnerships with Lenape and the continued collaboration there, thank you. I think that's wonderful and, you know, certainly sentiment from the strategic planning sessions was the desire to create opportunities for kids and the challenges of being a small district to do so. I think that's just an awesome partnership. The proximity we have with the high school is wonderful and appreciate the efforts to take advantage of that.
The ability to think out the box is wonderful, but to have people that will help you, you know, live the ideas that you're trying to put forward. This was something that honestly came through collaboration with all four districts in the region, Lenape, Byram, and us in Neckong. It was really nice to see it and we're all pushing and hoping that we can get a little bit more out of it in following years.
So transportation, is that transportation from Lenape to VRS, parents still get their kids to Lenape?
Nope.
How does that work when, I'll give an example, where I live, we are not bused to Lenape, you're walking. So.
So I think that would be.
They're going to pick up one kid and not the other?
I think that would be, if you are bused, if you're, if you were a Lenape student, my understanding is, and you get transportation, they will provide that transportation. They are, they still aren't providing courtesy busing for people, I guess, within those boundaries. That's my understanding.
And it makes sense. No, it makes sense. I was just trying to figure out, I'm like, if you're saying you could provide it for the one, how do you not provide it for the other?
They'll be running with their normal bus stop ultimately in the morning.
Any other questions on start time or bell schedules?
Still want to give everybody opportunity for new business, though. I kind of jumped in and stole the show.
That's all right. That's all right. Now, anybody with new business? That moves us to old business. This comes back to our sale of the wetlands.
So the one thing I just wanted to say on that, just to put it on record, is when we had that small committee meeting, we didn't come out of that and recommend the sale of a property. We didn't do that. We came out of that and said, the developer brought this to us, we're expecting to hear something back. We don't know anything else. And that was it. We didn't recommend it as a committee that we move forward with the sale. I'll also say tonight was the first time I heard him say anything about donating that land to the state.
Shame here.
I've never heard him mention that before tonight in terms of the state taking control of it as wetlands and then it being forever preserved in perpetuity. That was never mentioned at that meeting back in August.
Not to my recollection. That's why I asked him to clarify then in writing on this.
Yeah, so, you know, it doesn't seem to be a well-constructed plan or very well-thought-out. All they brought us in August was a bunch of plans to say, here's what we think we want to do. None of it is approved. You know, but we need your land to do anything. And we kind of said, it's not enough for us to do anything with. When you give us more information, we'll bring it forward. That was the sum total of the conversation.
And the retort to that is that we should have more information to you and an idea of what's going on. I think it was within a week or two, within a week or two, we were supposed to get that information.
Meeting we had in November was the same set of plans that we saw back then, which now sounds like it's changed again.
Well, the plan I saw, I saw a schematic before that crazy meeting in Neckong, whenever that was. Not Neckong, in Stanhope at the firehouse.
Even several years ago.
Several years ago.
No, yeah.
I saw that. That was a plan that they had.
August now.
You know, and that got blown up because it got caught up with the development on Bankstreak and then the new developments that's supposed to happen on the other side of town where Peterson is and Sammer Brothers and that whole section back there. And that was, that whole thing just blew up. And then at that time, when we had the meeting at Stanhope, they weren't even, that was a concept. When we had our meeting that summer, they haven't even, they didn't even go to the town yet. They have not, till this date, they still haven't gone to the town and have anything. That's why, you know, he's saying he wants everything wrapped up in a knot, but I'm not sure he knows what he needs. Somebody's feeding him information that he needs all this kind, all kinds of barriers and stuff. So I don't know. They haven't even made a presentation to the land use, okay? I talked to Tom Romano the other day. Okay, I talked to Tom Romano the other day. So they're starting to probably get active now, you know, and I think they waited a little too long to sell the property because interest rates were bad and now, you know, the whole banking issue, so everybody's a little bit on eggs. So they're in a little bit of a hurry to close a deal. But, you know, there was never a commitment on our part, and even tonight, there's no commitment to sell the property. There's a commitment to gather information. And I, I now speak for myself, I don't like to make it, I don't like making a decision unless I have as much information that I think I need. And right now, I don't have it, I don't have enough information to make a decision to say, yes, we should sell it or no, we shouldn't. So that's, that's how I feel in terms of personal feeling. I don't know any...
My concern with all of that is that I don't feel like they are ready on their end either, because all we're asking is simple. We want more information to make that decision. Like you said, you came to the door, you gave us an offer. We were not looking to sell, so we have no clue what this is worth because it wasn't our rate. All we were asking for you is give us some information. And he's saying, he pulled that number out of thin air. That doesn't seem very serious to me. If you are, I mean, not like we are looking for anything like that, but if he actually puts some thought into that, present that information to us so we can know where you were coming from when you did that. And then on our end, maybe consider if this is something that should be, that we should be presenting to the citizen of Stanhope that we are representing on this committee.
You know, there's, there's a lot, he made that comment about, well, you know, we'll just make it the industrial park that it's owned for. Well, I think he could say that if he wants to because it is zoned that. But I believe when that was zoned that way, that probably most of you don't know this, you know where Acorn Street is on 206 in Byram? Well, there was a plan to connect that with 602. So all the traffic coming from Sparta towards 80 could go on Acorn Street, come out on 206 in Byram and jump right on 80 there. That's when that, I don't see heavy trucking going down Brooklyn Road. Brooklyn Road can't handle heavy trucks. Doesn't have the turns, doesn't have the shoulders, doesn't have the sight distances that you need. So that means anybody leaving that development would have to go left and down Sussex, was it 602 into Sparta to grab 80. I'm not sure if I'm a developer for a trucking outfit, if that's the route I want to send my guys on every day. You know what I mean?
The thing is also, I don't feel like, from our perspective, we have to be defensive because all the information presented to us up until this point is not very clear. Like, they came in August and they're like, okay, we're going to give you information in two weeks. That's what I heard, right? It was few months by the time they came back. They came back with minimal information. We're like, hey, this is still not enough. Can you, can you feed us some information? They come back now, a few months later, telling us that they're in a rush, but appears to me that they're holding this whole process. They were really serious about it. They would have came forward within those two or three weeks in August and, you know, convinced us. They're the salesman. Sell us your project so that we can be convinced that this is the way we want to move forward with.
When did you get the call that they, that they weren't...
Two days ago.
Two days. I mean, if he hadn't missed it by two days, we wouldn't have been talking till eight. You know?
You know, I would like to thank Gil for speaking to Neckong, speaking to, I'm sorry, who did you speak with over there? Superintendent, was it?
No, the board president, Bernadette DeSandro.
I think you brought more facts for us today than they did. Just understanding how communities works or, as you said, units, you are correct legally, they cannot have children that attend our school in one bedrooms. After the age of two, they would need to have two-bedroom homes. So in order for us to make informed decisions, having that information handy and asking those questions, I feel are very reasonable. As he, you know, kind of uses his own words for him, the townships requiring market surveys for them to even submit a proposal, we are allowed to ask the same things. We are a committee. We can ask pretty much what we agree upon, and what we're asking for is for them to invest their time and money before we use public time and money on getting an appraisal done. I think that's beyond fair. Their land and what they want to do, industrial, that's up to them. That's strictly up to them. If we were to move forward to even have a conversation, I would not feel comfortable to form an opinion based off what I've heard today and based off the pushback I got on them investing their time and money. I cannot stress enough, any asset worth tens of millions or hundreds of thousands, it's not so much my concern in what they've done with their land. What I'm concerned about is our 40 acres and asking fair, reasonable questions. So from what I've learned today, it's where we were last time when I was here in public session, nothing new. And I just wanted to thank you for speaking to Neckong on our behalf. Thank you.
Well, and for him to say that the land has no value. Well, for a person who wants the land, it clearly has value on one side. It might, maybe it does have value to us, maybe it doesn't, but clearly it has a value to them.
We wouldn't be responsible to the school if we didn't maximize value, if we did even decide to have that conversation.
Our job, I'm not acting in my own interest. My own interest might be different. But in terms of representing a community, we need information. We're making a decision for a community that we have to answer to, okay? And I don't even talk in at the polls, but we have to answer to because we see them every day, okay? And we want to do what's best for the community. And that's, there are things they need to do. And if they can't do it, then they're not the company to develop it. Someone else will develop it.
And even today, some of the more simple questions that we had, the right person to answer those questions wasn't here because he kept referring to the individual that couldn't make it to the meeting and that he's not the developer, then why didn't we bring the entire crew here today to solidify a little bit of the trust on our end at least?
The only reason that they were even here tonight is because they reached out yesterday, as was said, and, you know, there was this desperate plea. You know, Debbie and I had a conversation as to, do we write it in the agenda as a presentation or do we just let them speak at, you know, the public session? The concern was if you had questions, if you had significant questions and you wanted to extend the conversation and we had other people in the audience, it wouldn't be fair holding them to the two minutes of speaking and then allowing this individual in public session to speak for as long as he wants, which is the reason why last minute, in a pinch, we, you know, we made a decision to just put it on as a presentation to provide you all the opportunity to kind of have that back and forth for more than anything else, just try to get as much information as we can. And like most of you said, we didn't get anything. I don't feel like we got any information out of this.
You know, saying, honestly, I don't think we said no. I think they're saying no. They're making sure that we're saying no at this moment, right?
He wanted a read of the room, but if you come to the room with no answers to anything that we asked previously, and then when we ask you questions, you still can't answer them, you're not going to get a very good read of the room because how do we know how we feel with no answers?
Well, it's, you know, it's not that we had a conversation four days ago and now we're talking months, months have gone by.
I think we're providing a lot of power to him and who he represents and what he's trying to achieve to put us in a very difficult spot. And I think as a small community, we're very school-centered, very kids-centered. There's not a lot that divides Stanhope. This would have to be a top five type of item that would be a divisive issue in the community. And I just, we've had previous discussions. Anytime this has come up, I just, I have serious doubt that the divisiveness that may result from this discussion is going to wreak positive outcome for our school or for our students. And I think that, you know, I was certainly surprised to see the addendum on the agenda. I appreciate the rationale as to why that transpired. I understand how that transpired now. But to come in and to give him that forum before the Board of Education is like, we are now thrust into this. All right, are we selling the land? Are we not selling the land? And I think that's a conversation fairly for us to just have a board. Are we even interested? And, you know, are we even interested? If this is so divisive for our community, is it worth throwing this onto the table for the community? I don't, I don't know enough. Some things were shared as far as what exactly us selling the land allows them to do in terms of development and what they couldn't do in terms of development. I said, I believe in January, I think those matters should be discussed between the town council and the townspeople. I do think that this extends generally beyond the role of the board. I get it. We were given an offer, we give a response. Individually, as a board member, I don't have any interest in continuing this discussion without some real information. And I'm talking like, there would have to be an offer in the millions that would change our community. I'm not interested in throwing the community into a really divisive issue. I personally don't have strong feelings about development, not development, residential, whatever it may be, commercial. I have interest in the community, in a community that's together in support of the students that came out en masse, no, not en masse, but overwhelmingly by percentage to vote for a referendum to support our school. We have wonderful things going on. We've been thrilled to see it all unfold. Credit to our administration for running with those plans. Credit to our staff who's providing an awesome education for our kids. I just don't think we need this. I just don't think we need this. That's my personal opinion and certainly nothing shared this evening after our request for more information has changed my mind.
But I think that's, that's the key right there. See, I'm, I'm on, not even on the fence. There's nothing there that says, wow, we need to buy this. There's nothing that's been said. There's nothing there that's been said that we wouldn't want to upset the community. I feel we should get the information from him. Then we are the second step. We as a board say, okay, we have all the information we need to do this, except how the community feels. That's the piece we wouldn't have. But I don't feel comfortable going in front of the community to talk about this unless I had the information. Because then you get peppered with questions that you can't answer and you can't, it's just not the way you would do business. You need to go to a meeting like that prepared to answer the hard questions. And I agree with you in that this needs, this needs to be a community decision, okay? Because what we're going to do doesn't affect the education of our kids in this building. That's our responsibility. What our decision is going to do is going to affect outside this community, outside our school property now. And I think that's where we need to be cognizant of how the community feels this should go. One of the interesting things I think he said was the conservation piece, because I know a lot of people just like open land, like a place to take a beautiful walk on an autumn day. It's beautiful back there. If that's something that he's willing to sew up in writing and stuff, maybe that's something the community might be interested in, you know? And the other piece, and again, I want to divorce myself, step back, no hat for president of the board here. I didn't want to mention it tonight, but as far as I'm concerned, if they want to do this project as a pilot, I'm a no. I'm a no. That's how I feel. I see what is done to other communities and that's just not the way to go. There's nothing that they could do to get that kind of tax reduction on their property that's going to add jobs and make this community better.
Did he reference that? I might have missed that. Did he reference the possibility of a pilot?
That's the way, that's the way development's going this way. You're going to pay half the taxes on it.
And just, any questions on the...
Was not mentioned.
Was not mentioned.
Not mentioned, but as far as I feel, that's my opinion.
In my experience, that's accurate. You know, they were asked two questions in that letter, I believe, correct? So the answer to the first question's thin air, and the second one was no, they won't provide data. So that's all I can really go off of. I'm going to go off of that and I see it in that discussion. Yeah.
Only once, but multiple times already, so let's move on to old business or anything else.
Yeah. Real quick, before we move on, should we come to an agreement as to if this gets brought up again, how we proceed with even wanting to entertain another gentleman coming to speak? Should we agree on that if they do come and speak next time, I don't know if it's, we just give them the two minutes and then we kind of see if we want to approve more of this so that they're, and I understand why he was thrown in where he was and that makes sense, but moving forward, is there a way that we can have a little bit better guidelines as to when this is brought up, how it's brought up and how we can hear it so that we're not just wasting everybody's time?
Discuss like how that would, what that would look like.
Well, I think, for at least the way I'm thinking, is that if they ever, if they want to come back, they have to present us with an agenda. Okay? What are they going to discuss? What are they going to bring up? What are their points, et cetera? Instead of just giving them an open platform, okay? We could look at that and say, this is nice, but you didn't answer any of the questions we asked.
So it can be discussed amongst us if you guys receive more communication?
That's, that's where the tough part comes.
That's where the tough part comes.
Because we can't communicate as a board.
If we convene as a board...
I think, I think it would warrant a special meeting. And that's where I was very surprised tonight because my understanding was there wouldn't be any type of presentation like this until we agreed as a board, the information we provided was worth taking this step.
So I think the word presentation was probably where the misunderstanding comes in, and that's on me for...
Well, it's on me. I put him there.
Well, but really, it was a response to the letter.
We discussed how to try to fit an individual and to try to give the board, not to do necessarily a presentation, the one that we requested. There was never an intention that that's what this was, hoping that we can get some questions answered. And I think the fact that it was labeled presentation may, and I honestly didn't even think twice about it until now that I sit here and realize that that's what we requested in the letter. I think the word presentation is where, this was, you know, the intention was that this was a gentleman coming to talk to us about what their intentions are. Debbie asked, why haven't you responded to us? It's been almost three months and they didn't have answers.
It was heated. We got heated on the phone. But he asked for the time and it has been mentioned in past meetings when this has been discussed, the transparency issue. And I personally, this is on me, did not feel comfortable moving forward with a conversation without full transparency of the board, hearing what he had to say. And when it was brought up that we would bring in an old business, which absolutely makes sense because at this point, right, something's already been discussed as old business, to go back on our own policy and say we can only give him two minutes when, let's face it, it's more than a two-minute conversation, I didn't feel comfortable doing that. So I kind of, I kind of webbed it in a way, hopefully to make everybody comfortable with the questions and what was being had. I realized it was under presentations. I didn't mean it to be a presentation. I just wanted to have everybody to see whether he was bringing information to us, and then we found out he was not. But needless to say, it took longer than two minutes. So it became convoluted. That is on me. I was just trying to make it as available information as possible in a setting where we could all hear it at one time.
That's understood and appreciated genuinely. I would just say, based on tonight...
Going forward, I think we do need something different. Agreed.
I don't know. I think a conversation among us is, are we, what his intent is something that is inherently divisive to the community. I think it warrants a conversation on our part, say, are we going to give him the platform to do it?
So, so looking at it this way, I don't know that I, I don't know that I agree or I disagree, and I wish I could explain it a little better. I don't feel that his intent is necessarily divisive. For me, his intent was wasting time because he came here, I'm not even quite sure why unless he, like he said, he wanted to read the room. But he read the room with giving zero information. So if anything, I felt he wasted his own time as well as ours. But I don't, but I don't know that I would want to limit that again. So for me, anybody, whether it's him, another developer, whoever, who wants to come and talk, I feel as a board that represents the overall community, we kind of have a service that we have to, we're put into a position to hear. We don't have to make a decision. We can have 98,000 conversations before or after, but if we don't give whoever wants to speak the opportunity to say whatever, whatever is in their head, I feel like we're doing disservice to ourselves and the community because maybe there's information that they might give.
And full disclosure, I did feel, based on the conversation that he and I had, that he was going to come here with something valuable, you know, and I would not have wasted anybody's time had I known he was going to come here with, you know, empty pockets, so to speak, in more ways than one, right? So I wouldn't have done that. You know, I said they have questions and he alluded to the fact that he had answers and I wanted you guys to get those answers.
Could I make a suggestion?
Could I make a suggestion? And what I feel you and Mr. Hugman did was extremely responsible by asking them to give us more information. You can't control what they said, but I want to kind of go off what Tom said earlier. If this ever becomes a serious conversation, I think it needs to be its own special thing, where the public's a little bit more notified on what's going on. I would feel a lot more comfortable seeing our community here. You want to talk about feeling and reading the room? We don't know how our community truly feels based off the information we heard today, which is nothing. If they came in here today and offered us a bajillion dollars, I'm not going to put a real number on it, I still don't know how our community would feel, or our school. Ultimately, that's what I'm concerned with. And I, you know, I can't stress enough, I don't feel, any discussion with information's healthy. I said that during my interview, right? I just didn't get anything from today. So Matt posed a very fair question. Do we continue to open the floor, or do we say?
I think the answer, and by process, right, in order to have these discussions, is if they want to come back, he has two courses. He can come to public session, and he can speak, and we can limit his time. If he wants to talk and present something to Gil's point, an agenda, that agenda goes to committee. That committee discusses it with the board, with the recommendations to whether or not that presentation moves forward. But committee is the right way, because you don't have the whole board available on that kind of notice. To convene a special meeting is notice, it's time, it's advertising. And we can do all of that, once we know what they want to talk about, and we should.
When I crafted that letter in January, based on all of your feedback, right, and before sending it out, everybody had an opportunity to take a look at it, my vision was to get information, and then hopefully create a, recreate a scene that was at the firehouse three years ago, where we filled this room with people to hear the information, which would give you, the board, an opportunity, whether it be in a formal meeting, or at drop-off, or pickup, or on the ball field, to hear the opinions of the people who voted you in. We're not there. We can't invite people here to a meeting and then say, I'm sorry, we don't have anything to share with you. So I think if they had information for you that could have been put together in a presentation to the community, then I can see, moving forward with that process. My feeling is, to Matt's question, we don't entertain or invite anybody back until we have something in writing, and the board ultimately gets a chance to look at it and say, yeah, we'd like to hear more. You know, again, not knowing what we were hearing tonight, you know, I was hopeful that this individual would shed a light on what they're looking to do, and ultimately give you reasons why this is good for the town and good for the school.
Exactly.
Just saying that we would be married doesn't, doesn't give us the benefits.
Fifty percent ends in divorce, so.
Well, I would be surprised if we hear from him anytime soon, because he was busy walking out when we were trying to say when our actual next meeting was. So I guess he read the room and didn't like what he saw.
I'm not sure, he's the realtor. He's not the developer. So I just don't know if the developers threw him to the, you take the heat tonight, you know, that kind of thing. You know what I mean? Because he couldn't answer, he couldn't answer the questions, even if he wanted to. He's not the developer, you know, so.
But again, I have to take the hit on this one. I wanted to make sure that everything was on the level and everything was cool.
There's no hits to take.
No, there's no hits here.
No, 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 but yeah, but.
There's no hits. This is what needs to happen. We need to find, this is, we're trying to find our way here, and we're trying to do it right.
I mean, I do think it was important that he wasted his time, right? So yes, he wasted ours, but to me, he had an opportunity to come, and if he truly wanted to move things forward, then the developer should have provided him with the tools to do so. He came out tonight, he was given an opportunity.
And he said Bruce was coming with him as well. He said the developer was coming with him.
Well, he, I mean, in fairness to that, he said the developer's wife took ill, that could happen to anybody, I get that. But then you would have information. So they didn't provide you the tools, you came out here. If anything, he would have been better served, in my opinion, to call you up and say, I'm sorry, we need to come to the next meeting.
Yeah.
I still think there's a central question. Is the board interested in selling our land? If he, he could have gone to Lenape Valley Board of Education and say, you know, we need additional land, we want to buy all of your athletic fields, and that way we can develop ours. And, I mean, that would be ridiculous. The board would not give him the opportunity to have a full discussion about the proposed purchase of Lenape Valley Fields, which currently may be designated as athletic spaces, so that he can do a development. We, I do think as a board, need to be having discussion, are we interested in selling that land? And as a board, have we fully considered the immediate and long-term value of that land to our district? And I don't think we have.
But how do, how do we, I mean, or I will say this, I'm going to speak just for me. I don't know that I can answer those questions, because I don't have enough information to formulate an answer. I don't know what their intent is, I don't, right now, I know we have 40 acres. They sit there. Truthfully, a year ago, I didn't know we had 40 acres. So I don't know that I can answer, would I feel that it's in the best interest of the school community to do anything with it or not.
I don't think he's the guy to inform us of that. He's not the guy.
And that might be, but, but I don't know, because I haven't heard, I mean, granted, I could say he came with nothing. But as far as the developer goes, I don't know, because we haven't gotten any answers.
I don't think anybody who would profit off of the sale of that land should inform us of the potential value of that land. I'm not saying they don't have some, some due process there, but I do think we need to do our due diligence and...
I would argue we can't do our due diligence until we know what they're trying to build.
Yes. Even to that, they could be building an indoor paintball facility, for all I care. Today, they provided no information.
Well, he did tell us they want, I mean, with the sale of our land, they want to build.
Now, you know.
I lost my notes.
He said they wanted to build a certain amount of single-family homes.
Which is different from what was initially presented to the committee that sat with him, right? That he, it's different.
It's different.
It's absolutely different.
What was originally stated?
There was more than 185 units.
So he said 185, 200.
The original thing, he never mentioned a conservative.
He never mentioned single-family homes.
And the planning was different, because he even said tonight, it started out as X units, and now it's been brought down. Our original document we saw that August was over 200, I think he said 280, units in like three or four or five buildings. There was no mention of single-family homes.
Correct.
It was all completely changed.
The scope of his project, absolutely.
Completely different.
I think we can agree, hundreds of residential units. I mean, we do know what they want to do with the land. Is that, they got me nuts? And again, to me, those are discussions more for the town and townspeople. I get we're in the middle of it, because we have an owned land that's of value to that process happening. But I, I mean, I do think we have a general understanding of what the end goal is, and a strong understanding that it will be divisive. I'm not saying, there will be people who think it's wonderful for the community, there will be people who are completely opposed to it, but I...
That's why, that's why the question, when he mentioned units, and they say the word units to keep it ambiguous, it's critical what those units are. He never mentioned single-family homes before, right? And that was never, all of a sudden, he's mentioning single-family homes, so it doesn't give a number. So if he puts two, does that make it his development now? He only puts two, and the rest, and he puts 200 apartments?
But to that, to your point, whatever he puts, I mean, we can sell the land, can't they just turn Kia and sell it to another developer? So whatever their plans are, it could change immediately, and so we can't base our decision based on, well, they're going to build 100 apartments, and 100 of these, and that could quickly change. You referenced the pilot program, which we would have no control over, and would result in housing being developed that provides no tax income for the schools. And we would have zero control of that once we sell the land.
Through my experience with the sale of Lyndon Ave, my understanding is that a contract can be drafted that can limit any type of selling of the land for profit. It can limit what's done on the property. Obviously, attorneys would have to be involved. It could potentially limit them from, from turning this into a pilot project. Those, I mean, those are questions and topics that are way, 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 you know, down the road.
Exactly.
Should, again, the board even decide to want to counter, to entertain this. You know, so I do think that there is, that the board would have some say in how the land is developed, if, if that's something that, you know, the board wanted to do, but...
The reason for my rhetorical question, even how the community is designated, whether if it's a senior community, or, can't stress enough, he's correct, now, understanding how many of the units is broken down. Now, remember, this is based off of the value and benefits they said this would bring to this, and student enrollment, right? So, you know, overall, I, I can't stress enough, I agree with what Tom said. I'm sort of a no-starter point of view right now. I think a lot of energy is going into something that, you know, you gave them an opportunity, they missed, and if they want to come back in writing.
So right now, to me, the ball's in their court, right? They know we want answers. We want, we ask questions, we want those answers. If you can't provide us those answers, there's no need for us to go any further. You know what I mean? The ball's in their court. Come back to us with answers, and we can, we can discuss, we can discuss them, and then we can make a decision using their answers. Is that good for us? If it's not good for us, the answer's no.
So the questions we ask, what was the rationale for the 40,000? It was out of thin air. I didn't get any impression that they're going to come back with another proposal. And then the other question was about the Netcon enrollment. You got answers to that, that development resulted in five students.
Right, but I don't, I don't, to me, there's a lot more to the impact on the town. There was, because I remember, I was at that meeting, there was a lot of discussion about how you wouldn't be able to drive in Netcon. I go through it.
But I think Tom's, I don't mean to speak for you, so I apologize. Tell me if I'm wrong. He's really asking the question of, why are we still talking about this? If it's, if there's nothing to discuss, why are we still doing that?
What other information are we asking from him?
Well, we're asking, we're asking for, you know, how did it impact Netcon's community? All right? Did, did the school enrollment go up? We know it did. Did the traffic issues come about, that you can't drive in Netcon because there's so much traffic? Two my laymans going through, I didn't see it, but that doesn't mean that's the way it is. Did it have a financial impact? Are all the local businesses doing better? Did it add dollars to their economy? Did it make it a better community? Do they offer something to your community that you never had? Walking paths, a place for your senior citizens to meet on Sunday morning? You know, I mean, I don't know those answers. That's what I would expect for him to do, to say, this is how that development embellished the type of community that Netcon is. I don't know those answers. But that's, to me, is the kind of report I would, hopefully, I would get, that we can make, help us make a decision.
Certainly from somebody who is serious for selling, I would think.
Yes, yes.
Or even assume that we would donate it. You know, it's just, it's, yeah, yeah.
Going back to Thomas' point, so we, can we agree that we are not, at this precise moment, interested in selling that property?
Not with the information we have. Absolutely not.
Okay, so up until, the only reason why we were maybe considering that is because we had a potential buyer, and like you said, we are looking, we need to look for the best interests of town, and we should have listened to them, just to see what they had to offer.
I think it's important.
We never put a for sale sign.
It's important to define considering, right? Because Batia said it earlier, and she had, she just stepped out. There was no intention, there's no, nothing communicated from the board members who attended that meeting that said, yes, we're interested in selling, please give us an offer. All that was said was, give us information. You know, you've presented this to us, we're going to listen. It would be negligent for the board not to listen, you know?
We're not looking to sell. It's not up for sale. We agree on that one. And the person that came forward, you know, wasn't, the information provided wasn't good enough for us to change our minds, so I think we should just put this to rest.
It wasn't good enough for us to come back to you. Right now, right now, the way he left, unless they come back with answers to some legitimate questions, the answer's no.
And then tying it back to what you said, unless we get additional information, and we discuss it in a committee, then we'll make the decision to bring it forward. So I suggest that at this point, we just forget about this and move on with our meeting.
I agree. I would just add, I think that's discussed as a board, as opposed to a committee. This is, there's, this is such a substantial issue that I think it needs to be a discussion at the board level.
Yeah, I think the commitment is, it has to go to committee and come to the full board. That's all we're saying, by matter of process. There's no way for it to get straight to the board, other than potentially as correspondence, right? By, just by matter of process. That's all I was trying to say.
In the form of a special meeting, it could be a discussion of the board, and I do think, I think that that's something that would have to occur.
The committee can...
Sure, sure. I understand that. So it goes through the committee, but then to the board as a whole, before it then becomes a platform.
Absolutely. That's all we're saying, is if there's any further correspondence, it'll come into committee or just be listed as correspondence, depending on what it is.
Anybody else with comments on this? I hate to do this, guys, but we have an executive.
Public session first, obviously.
Yes, yes. Just to keep the, the process and the, moving along on the agenda, this takes us to, we just concluded Old Business, that takes us to public session number two. There is no public present. I still feel I need to do an executive motion. Okay, is there a motion to go into executive?
Motion. Second.
Be it resolved that the Stanhope Board of Education adopts the following resolution, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of Public Law 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the Stanhope Board of Education is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Stanhope Board of Education, County of Sussex, and the State of New Jersey, that a closed session for the Board of Education, where the public shall be excluded, will be held at this time for the purpose of personnel. Be it further resolved that the action of the board with regard to the above entitled matters shall be disclosed to the public at a later date, and to the extent that the same is not presidential to the interest of the parties involved, and would not result in a possible invasion of their right to privacies. All those in favor of going into executive, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? No? Anyone abstain? Nick? Nick? Back on live?
Go on now, yes.
Tom, you gotta turn your microphone on.
I need a motion to reenter from executive.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Anyone abstain? Okay, let me just write that time down.
I got you right here, Gil.
You got the time?
Yep.
Okay. A motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Second.
No discussion. Anyone? Everyone? Sorry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Nay. Okay, thank you very much.